The State Board of Education meeting will get started. So the November State Board work session will now come to order. Denise, please call the roll.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Rachel Wise?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Patrick McPherson?
Yes.
Glenn Flint?
Yes.
Lilly Larson?
Present.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
John Whitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloomstead?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Board members, please remember to engage your microphone before speaking and to turn them off when you are finished, and please turn off personal cell phones. Thank you. First item under our Board Reports, Dates and Discussion Items, we get the great opportunity to talk a little bit about Teachers of the Year. I'll turn it over first to the Commissioner.
Yeah, and first of all, I wanted to thank, I know Laura's not in the room, but Laura Siple who put together that event. We didn't get her thanked over there. She writes that script and then put that "thank you" in there, I will tell you what would not happen without Laura doing all that work, and so we'll be certain to recognize her for that. I also want to just, I think it's a good time, we've got a couple of former Teachers of the Year in the room, so we have Patty Coke Johns from 2006, and Bob Fuhrer from, let's see, Bob, you were 2011. Yeah, so I don't think I'm missing any other former ones. We have our current one and our incoming one also in the room, so thank you for being here. Yeah, I think Bob has something.
Yes, I think Bob had just a couple of comments, so Bob?
This is a reminder that I want to share with State Board of Education about the outreach of the Teacher of the Year program. A year ago, David Bernard Stevens and his wife Ruth were here from Kenya. Molly was in Kearney for that particular session. He charged me with dispersing a couple of items, and I brought one for the State Board today. This is called a kalabash, and they use it for dispensing milk and those sorts of things, and then ceremonial, but it was handmade by a Kenyan lady. I Googled this years ago, I don't know my presentations, that's 8,500 miles away. So the Teacher of the Year program from Nebraska, Tim talked about a couple of Nebraskans that wound up on the national stage as Teachers of the Year, so David comes from 8,500 miles away. I'm going to leave this with you as a reminder of the outreach of that program.
That's awesome.
That's beautiful. Thank you so much. That's a real... We're going to pass it on.
Just the last... Put something in and...
It is empty. It's terrible. I am tired. That's terrible. Thank you so much, and we'll have to be sure and send a thank you to David as well, so thank you. We also want to just take a second to recognize, the Teacher of the Year is an amazing program, and we are, I think, blessed as a State Board and Department to be involved in that program. And today we'll hear from our newly ordained Teacher of the Year in a little bit, from Amber Vlachnick, but I also would be remiss if I didn't recognize the two Excellence in Teaching Award winners that were recognized today, and they're Sharla Brandt from Longfellow Elementary School in Hastings, and Kimberly Shelvin from Columbus Middle School in Columbus. And again, it's always such a delight to be a part of that recognition luncheon. On a, and again, we will again recognize Laura Siple for all the work that she does in coordinating of the Teacher of the Year processes and the luncheon, so thank you very much, Laura. So every year, this is just such a highlight, to be able to have the 2016 Teacher of the Year give us kind of the year in review and the experiences that he has encountered over the past year, and we really appreciate our 2016 Teacher of the Year, Tim Warriors, for being here today, and please come forward, and we look forward to hearing your highlights of the past year. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. It's been so long since I've seen all of you, I don't... (laughter) Can the, perfect, okay. My goal is not to give a repeat presentation that you heard at the award luncheon, although that might be good for the public meeting, that's a little bit redundant for all of you that are actually here in the room. Certainly, I'll speak to the same chronological sequence of events, but my goal is to be a little more specific and more policy-oriented in what I share with you here, because I feel that's more relevant for this meeting rather than a luncheon that's honoring the teaching profession overall, and then this year's award winners. First of all, I think, I want to make sure I publicly say it, we've already thanked Laura, but I just want to make it clear that, I mean, not only is her work that she does in-state outstanding, but I can tell you now, having had my year and talking to other people in other states, I sincerely doubt there is someone in another state that does her job as well as she does, truly, because I cannot begin to tell you how I'll get panic messages from friends in other states that are like, "I don't have this flight set up," or "I don't know what to do with this," and I'm like, "I'm good." (laughter) "I've been covered for weeks, it's fine." So I do sincerely want to thank her publicly, because there is not anyone else in this country that is doing as well, as good of a job as she is with that, so seriously, thank you very much. So as I said at the luncheon, our first, like, formal function as State Teachers of the Year starts in San Antonio, and one of the big things that they push, and they started very early in San Antonio, is that we serve as advocates for the profession, so what that looks like, how to effectively advocate, because for most people, the, that's not really something that they do. For most educators, they're simply in the classroom, right, and that's, and for the most part, they are the only adult that they get to see is themselves for the majority of the day, and then that quick shoveling of food at lunch is where they see some other adults, and then they go home and grade and rinse and repeat. And so I'm lucky in that my background and the work that I do with my association has allowed me to peek a little bit outside of the classroom, but it was really beneficial to San Antonio to learn how to effectively communicate our experiences, because the reality is, is that it's perspective sharing that the most, that is the most important thing that we can do as teachers, because everybody that's involved in education decisions, us, you all, administrators, we are all attempting to do the same thing, which is to have the best possible schools that we can. We all just bring different perspectives and concerns to the table, and so it's about trying to have as many of those different perspectives come together so we can make the best possible decisions. You all have concerns and issues that are not reality to me. You are sitting at the 30,000-foot view of education, and so you are able to see larger trends and issues that I simply cannot, because my day is dedicated down-to-earth working with the kids, but at the same time, I think it's important that we have that communication where you're reminded of what it's like to be down at the ground working with the kids, just like I think it's actually very beneficial for teachers to understand the rationale behind the decisions that you make, and that school boards make, and that administrators make, because everybody has intention behind their actions, and I think too often, we're very quick to jump the gun and assume that that's not the case, and it's about learning and sharing with each other that that's the only way that we can really be beneficial and kind of step forward. So that was a lot of what San Antonio was, was just going through, how does this look? I mean, we even had role-playing exercises where it's all right, all right, you play the administrator that had to make that budget decision, and try and step into their shoes and defend the decision that they made, because you're going to have to make the hard call. The higher ego in leadership, the harder the calls you have to make, and so that's a reality of responsibility, and so it was a beneficial, it was a beneficial piece for all of us to experience. I mentioned how I was able to speak to Educators Rising in February, and also this fall in Kearney, and the thing that I really want to stress here, because this does have formal connections to the State Department of Education, you have State Department of Ed employees that are involved with the Educators Rising, is that for me, I'm imploring you to continue to promote this program, and if possible, expand this program as much as you can, because one of the questions that was asked of me a year ago, I'm sorry, I can't recall who asked me this question, but the question was about, you know, what can we do in terms of recruiting new educators, and this is, this is a very, this is very much low-hanging fruit in terms of a way that we can recruit well, strongly motivated educators into the profession. These are people that, they're still in high school, but they know that they have a calling and a passion for education, and the earlier that we can foster that, the better chance we have of getting them to not only pursue education, but to stay in the career of education, get past that five-year bump that a lot of teachers don't make it past, is because the support for them is starting in high school. It's not starting in college, it's not starting year one of teaching. They're getting experience, they're getting, it wasn't just me, they had other people that were there presenting, giving them information, giving them things to think about, and help them prepare to be effective educators. So please consider that whenever that comes up for you all. So again, the thing that I was happiest about in the state was the chance to connect with future teachers, and I think that that, that is, the more that we can all communicate to each other, the more that, the more that we can have active classroom teachers coming and discussing what those experiences are like with people in pre-professional programs, the better off we can be, because the reality is, the minute you're out of the classroom, the clock starts ticking in terms of how you start to distance yourself from what those experiences are, and it's nothing wrong or nothing that you can do about it, but you just, you have different priorities. Even the professors in the university setting, you start to forget the reality of what it is on a day-to-day basis, and how those, and how those decisions play out, how your day goes, and so the more that we can bring educators in and connect theory to practice, that's doubly beneficial, because then, there's more meaning that's established, there's discussions of pedagogy and best practices, because they can hear from educators on how they're actually using it, and they can see how they're actually using it. So that's another thing that I've learned as well in my, in my discussions and talking with people around the state. In February, I testified against LB 959, which was part of the pair of bills introduced by Governor Ricketts regarding, in his effort to help deal with property tax relief, and like I said at the luncheon, the goal necessarily was not specifically against LB 959, although there are a number, there were a number of provisions that I was concerned about in LB 959, namely the adjustments on the growth allowance for schools. It was again, that the discussions of teachers be interjected into the conversation, because, and, I mean, think about it, and I honestly don't know the answer to this question, but when these kinds of things come up, how many times do the state senators on the Ed Committee, how many classrooms have they visited, how many teachers have they talked to, how many people have they had the chance to actually talk to and ask how that's going to play out? Because what I said at the luncheon is absolutely true. When budgets are cut, a lot of that impact is hidden, because we do everything we possibly can to make sure that those budgetary decisions do not negatively impact our students, and that is the fundamental reality that I would like, not only the Education Committee, but you all to consider as well, when you make decisions about what's going to be happening in the future, because those aren't even necessarily monetary decisions, right? You all have the power to shape a lot of things that influence our classroom curriculum, for one, right? Time constraints is another major challenge of teaching. This is fundamentally true, not just of Nebraska, but of the United States. Teachers in the United States have the second highest teacher-student contact time amount of any country in the world, so I want to clarify what I mean by that. The vast majority of my day is spent teaching students. The reality is, in other countries, when we look at countries that we consider to be like the successful countries on the PISA assessments, countries like South Korea and Japan, their teachers have a lot more time that's devoted to planned time, collaboration. They teach maybe half of the amount of classes that I do in my school, and I'm blessed, by the way, I'm on the four-by-four block schedule, I teach three 90-minute periods, and I have 90 minutes of planned time a day, and if there's only any elementary teacher in the room, they're probably a little jealous right now that I just said that I have 90 minutes of planned time a day. But even then, even when you count that in, I'm still well above the international average for teacher-student contact time, and here's why that matters. It's much harder for me to integrate any new initiative or program into my teaching, because I don't have the time to put it together. Also, when you look at schools that are struggling, when they have, if they have populations that present a lot of challenges, the higher the student-teacher contact time, that means that's less time for us to work with those kids one-on-one, that's less time for interventions, that's less time to plan individualized programs for those kids, and that's one of the things, again, that was the message that I was trying to deliver, when you consider these actions, we know a lot of really great things that can improve our schools. The problem is, they require time and money, and oftentimes, they get implemented without one or both of those things, and so that is, that is, I'm telling you right now, that is the number-one challenge that teachers are facing currently, is we feel overworked, and ask any teacher if they can complete their job well in the time specified, right? I'm supposed to be at school from 7:30 to 3:45. Ask any teacher in my building if they can functionally complete their job to a high quality from 7:30 to 3:45 only, they cannot, I guarantee it. And that's not to say that other jobs don't have work outside of the day, that's fundamentally not true. However, I can think of a few other professions where I know going in that I can't complete my work every single day, that every single day I have work at home that I have to do. And again, we do it because we think it's the right thing to do, and we care, but that's often a perspective that gets lost when policy decisions are made. Again, and may I have the opportunity to speak to the EMAC conference, this is similar, it was a really nice chance to connect with top-level Department of Education officials to deal with data and technology, and again, these are the kinds of conversations that I really think need to continue to happen. They just wanted to know, hey, can you tell us what, what does it actually look like in the classroom when we talk about adding technology, when we try and use data more? What does that look like? And it was, I had a wonderful time. I had a wonderful time sharing, the conversations I had afterward were outstanding, and that's probably the, one of the second, that's probably the second major thing that I feel very strongly about after this year, is that we need to provide more formalized systems where teachers can talk with people in the Department of Ed, with the school board, with legislators, because I learned things from them, and they learned things from me, and again, it's all about sharing perspectives, so we have a better, more holistic understanding of everything that goes into educational, that goes into ed policy. Washington DC, I joked about how I talked Bears football with President Obama, but one of the things that was really profound for me in Washington DC was, I realized how significant unintended consequences can be in education policy, and I'll give you an example of something that I think that we would all agree is universally a positive, is the increased emphasis on STEM education, the initiative to hire more STEM educators, to get more people into those career fields, because we need those for our economy to continue to be strong as we progress into the 21st century. I mean, the piece that I talk to my kids about is, the fact that in Pittsburgh right now, there is not someone driving you if you take an Uber, right? The reality that self-driving cars are here already in 2016 highlights the need for continued emphasis in STEM education. However, the unintended consequence is that other, other subjects in education have, are not given as much attention. That was not their approach, it was certainly not the intention of President Obama or the Department of Education to downplay the social studies, but because it didn't get the same emphasis, it's been relegated. I don't, as much as I am happy that I don't have standardized assessment to worry about for social studies, at the same time, it is a little bit concerning that there's not. My predecessor Shelby, who was the 2015 Nebraska Teacher of the Year, he actually was able to go to the White House twice, because he was also honored as an outstanding math instructor. There is no equivalent award, the president does not award for outstanding social studies instruction, and so, and now there's a movement, you know, to expand STEM, right, it's not STEM, it's STEAM, to get the arts in there, but that still doesn't fit the social studies. So, so my point is, and obviously, I'm coming at it from that perspective as a social studies teacher, but I think it's important that we always examine, what are the different ways that we can emphasize all the different subjects, because I think we can all agree those are all critical, right? STEM is critical to provide those jobs for our economy, however, everybody needs a strong civic education, so that way they can be functioning members in our democratic society. And so that was, my wife, she said she was simultaneously impressed and concerned, because when we were at the Teacher Gala and I talked to Secretary King after saying hello, the very first thing I said was, "As a fellow social studies teacher, do you share my concern that we're not getting the emphasis that we have, that we need right now as a subject?" And my wife was like, "That is the first, that man shook hands with you, he was being nice, and you talk policy with him." And I'm like, "No, I'm going to take my chances." So, but I think that that's something, again, that's something to consider, and that was something that was profound for me when I spent my week in DC. Yeah, there's the picture of us with the secretary, and so, so yeah, she was, again, she was, she thought that was cool that I did that, but at the same time, she was like, "I don't, I would have never done that," so. With Administrator Days in July, I had the chance to go out to Kearney and give a presentation about the, what I think is a rather unique relationship that the Millard Education Association has with the Millard Public Schools, and I think that in all things in education, it's important to prop up what works rather than denigrate what doesn't, because I think anybody, and I'm about as, I'm probably the most ardent pro-Teachers Union person in the room, but even I would be foolish to ignore the fact that there are unions that do maintain hostile relationships and do things that could potentially be harmful to what's going on in that district. That is a reality, no argument. However, what we can choose to do is to figure out whether or not we're going to focus on those negative relationships, or find the districts and the associations that have strong working relationships, and build those up as model examples for what should happen. I do not view my district as the enemy, and more importantly, I understand that they are impassioned human beings that want to improve the quality of education that our students get, and I, right now, we're in contract negotiations, it's a little tough, given the projected revenue show for all the state level, right? That's a reality we're all having to live with, and already, we've had some tense conversations. But the difference is, when our meetings are done, we shake hands, we ask how our kids are doing, we talk to each other as human beings, because we separate issues from who we are, and more importantly, we aren't, we don't take it as a combative relationship. We realize that we help each other out, that we can come to each other when problems come up and figure out how to problem-solve together, or that we can honestly be the best advocates for each other. Several, for the longest time in the Millard Public Schools, no teacher had to pay any percent of their premium for their insurance, and that was a luxury that the current times can no longer afford, as we all know, the, every year, health costs are rising. It was my job to explain to the members why we needed to make that shift, not theirs, right? That was my job as the chief negotiator, and so I understood, because the district was transparent, they showed us their five-year projection on budgets, they showed us their five-year projection on health insurance, right, they showed us the facts, and because they were transparent and open, and explained why this change had to happen, myself and my negotiations team bought into it, and then I turned around to our members, and I explained, "Look, you may not like it, this is the reality we have to live in." In our pre-negotiation survey that year, 80% said they did not want to pay a percentage of their premium, and in fact, I had lots of emails that said that was a deal-breaker for them. We had 80% of our members vote yes on that contract that year, and I am fervently convinced it's because we have a strong relationship with our district, and it's because we're open and transparent with each other, and we work together to solve problems. And so I think that that is something that needs to be emphasized, because I think that we do a lot of things right in Nebraska, you know, even, even though, you know, I'm originally from Chicago, so you can guess what my political affiliation is, I actually, I like the, I like how we do things here in Nebraska. I don't object to the fact that it's a right-to-work state, because I feel that we have to earn our members, and they have to, that we have to earn the fact that they're a part of our organization, and so I think we do things very differently politically in Nebraska, including district and union relationships, and I think that that's something that I tried to promote in my time as Teacher of the Year, that, hey, this relationship is strong, if yours isn't for some reason, these are the things that we do, and you should attempt to do that as well, because it's worked really well. I mentioned as well, I had the chance to have a candidate forum, again, I think connecting teachers to even as high as I can go in terms of candidates, right, that's Brad Ashford and Don Bacon, just the chance to have discussions with them, but this is the reason why I wanted to highlight the candidate forum. One of the things that we stress as teachers is the idea of vertical alignment, that across the grade levels that we communicate with each other about what our outgoing expectations are, and what our incoming expectations are, so that way we're in sync, right? So ideally, what the kids are able to do at the end of their ninth-grade year in social studies is pretty darn close to what I'm expecting them to do at the start of their 10th-grade year, right, that we have that communication, we have that discussion between middle school and high school teachers, that we have that discussion between high school teachers and college teachers, and that has led to meaningful change. For example, in high school history classes now, it's much more skill-focused than content-focused, right, that it's not about cramming as many years and events into their heads as possible, it's, can you form an argument? Can you write an essay? Can you speak and debate about these issues? Those, but that's because we got feedback from the college level. It was very interesting having the different levels of candidates, and again, Glenn, I wish you could have been there, so you could have seen this, but, I mean, in your defense, you were at kind of an important State Board of Ed-related function, that's, but we had school boards, state board of ed, state legislature, all the way up to Congress, and it was very interesting hearing what the, what the school board people were saying versus what the state senators and the state, and the candidates for state unicameral were saying, because they had very different perspectives about what, where the funding issues are, and I imagine that that conversation, my impression was that conversation doesn't happen very often, and that maybe that's something that we can, that we can do more to help get people on, because again, it's about sharing perspective. So these are the major things that I've learned. So one of the things that I was encouraged to do is blog, so I've posted only twice. By the way, if you're familiar with the Terranova Test, that's an inside joke, there's a section of the Terranova Test where they're given nonsense words to see how well they can remember the definition of nonsense words, so a lep is a ball, a corf is a tiger, a pillit is a shoe, you can tell I proctored this. So that's, that's what I named it, a corf is a tiger. But anyway, the biggest thing that I learned is that we are an exceptional state for education, without a doubt. We do a lot of things right that I will fervent, I will completely concede, I took for granted that we, that we do these things. So, I mean, one of the things is, we, Diane Ravish kind of said it best, that Nebraska has the best kind of conservatism, and that we just, we stick with what we know, and then we're very patient in decision-making determining what we're going to do next. So we rode out the Common Core wave and realized, we can do things better. We rode out the charter school wave and realized, we can do things better, right, and we have, by the way, right? I understand the significance of choice, but we have choice. It's called the Wilson Focus School in Omaha, Nebraska, it's option enrollment, right? We have things that we, that we have developed, truly, public options that resolve the genuine concerns that were raised by the charter school movement, and so we've written those out. I want to commend all of you, along with the state senators, for the fact that you recognized at the high school level that the NISAs and the ACT were essentially redundant in the fact that they assessed the same subject area, so let's, let's minimize the testing burden, but let's still maintain the high stakes. I'm serious, folks, the other State Teachers of the Year did not believe me that you all made that decision. They, I had to show them an article from the World Herald that the ACT was the approved assessment for high school, because they did not, they could not envision a world where that was the reality. The other thing that was really impressive, so local control, voided national fads, truly, we are given a great deal of autonomy and respect, and that starts with you all, and it goes all the way down to the administration. We are given deference to figure out how we can best teach kids, and Mike Paye, he's a board member for the Millard Public Schools, he said it best at the candidate forum, "We hire the best professionals, so we trust them, we trust their professional judgment to do what's right," and I really respect that that's, that's true. Now, I feel that I'm going to talk about financial concerns in a minute on my, on my final slide, but we are financially more sound, and even though I'm about to raise financial concerns, it would be, it would be irresponsible for me to not acknowledge that we are sitting much better than other states. I had a very extended conversation with David Morales, he's the New Mexico State Teacher of the Year, and his district, a few years ago, faced such a budget shortfall that they gave the teachers two options. Either we fire, I think it was about 20 teachers, or you all don't have a planned period for a year. They voted to not have a planned period for a year because they didn't want to see their colleagues lose their jobs. Now, I want you to imagine what it would be like to teach with zero planned time during the day, and they did it for two years, because they continued to have a revenue shortfall for one more year before they finally had enough funding where they could put planned time back in. That is insane, and again, I take for granted that those hard choices have never had to be made here, and so I think it's important to acknowledge that that's, that that's where we're at. And the, one of the things I really want to emphasize is evaluation. Millard is not part of the pilot, but we have modeled our evaluation system very close to the pilot system based off the Danielson model that you all have been doing, so I feel like I can speak to this. This is, these are the things that I had to show State Teachers of the Year, because they didn't believe me that this is how I was being evaluated, that I was being evaluated based on observation by my administrator, and based on goals that I set for my students at the start of the year, no test scores. Here's the other thing that was, that floored them, and this is from this year, by the way, because I, last year, I had eight observations by my administrator, I made, I was a nine-year veteran at that point, that is unheard of in other states to have an administrator in your room for a veteran teacher. This is this year, it is not even, we're barely into November, I have had four observations. These are not just five-minute show-up, drive-by, see-you-laters, these are half-hour, if not more, times where my evaluator's in there. These are the kinds of comments he's leaving for me, this is the feedback I'm getting from my administrator about how I'm doing and the job that I'm putting in. This is the framework that you all are piloting, and I feel that you deserve a great deal of praise for that, because this is the kind of stuff that truly makes teachers better, is that I'm getting, and I'll get the feedback later that day, and it'll be, he'll leave questions, too. He'll leave questions in this document and ask for me to answer them. You don't see this in other states, and again, this is something that very easily we could just look past and be like, "Oh, whatever, no big deal, it's an evaluation model." Again, I had people asking me for copies of this, because they wanted to go back to their state and say, "This is how we need to do our business." So it's pretty, it was a pretty proud moment for me to be able to, and again, they got sick of me at the, by the end of the year, they would ask a question about a national-level policy issue, and they'd go, "Okay, we know Nebraska doesn't do this, you can stop saying that now," right? But that's, that's a commendable thing, because, and here's why it's commendable, it's not just that we do things differently, but that it works, right? That's the key thing. When there was the Race to the Top Initiative, and Nebraska was one of the first states eliminated because of our charter laws, I believe was the main, was the main barrier, we outperformed 18 of the 19 states that got raised to the top in terms of assessments, and the one state that we didn't, which is Massachusetts, which has been like the poster child of states for a while, right, their largest inner-city school, Boston Public, our largest inner-city school, Omaha Public, which is, by the way, comparable in size, they have roughly the same number of students, Omaha Public Schools graduates its students at a rate that's 20% higher than Boston Public.[1772.21] So again, we should be very proud of the work that we do and the system that we have put together. Now, that being said, I'd be remiss if I didn't conclude with, these are some things that I feel, from my perspective as a teacher, that we should consider working on as a state. One of the things that I really feel that would be great to promote even more are hybrid teacher leadership roles, meaning that you do something like instructional coaching, but you also maintain a foot in the classroom, to keep that perspective of what it's like to, to be in the classroom. This is something I've seen in a lot of other states that, and here's the reason why it's important. And I'm starting my, starting master's number two, so I've actually been able to look at some peer-reviewed journal articles about this. There's a lot of teachers that want leadership, but don't want to be administrators. And so, there's a lot of folks that leave the teaching profession, because they don't feel like they have leadership opportunities, so they want to go elsewhere. This helps us with teacher retention. If we give people a chance to partially stay in the classroom, but work on curriculum development or coaching other teachers, this will help with retention, it'll help with better-trained teachers, which means it ultimately improves students. I would strongly consider, especially, you know, with the revenue shortfall, finances are going to get looked at a lot. Equity was a word that was used a lot, and I think it's fundamentally true that we need to focus on equity for funding rather than equality for funding. The goal should not be to have equal funding for schools, because schools had different challenges. Millard Public Schools, third cheapest district in the state per pupil, nine thousand dollars and change per kid. You go to the western part of the state, you're talking about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars per pupil. Now, it's very easy to look at that and go, wow, they're really wasting their money. No, they're not. They have fewer kids, higher, you know, more facilities per kid, and more importantly, they have transportation concerns, it's not a reality for Millard. It's not fair to punish those districts, because they have to bus their kids farther, because it's a rural district. Right? They should get additional funding to make it equitable, to handle the challenges that they have. And one thing that I can speak to for certain, is that when you have children that are in poverty, and they're ESL, and maybe they're even refugees, right? Those are not additive problems, those are problems that multiply, which means you need even additional assistance, you need more support, you need lower class sizes for your teachers. And so, I think that's something that, that should be considered. TOSA was developed in nineteen ninety. When it was developed, poverty was added in later, it was not factored in as part of the architecture. So I would strongly consider that we look at the issue of equity versus equality. Again, address the revenue issue our districts have. Millard Public Schools increased its budget by point-six percent this year. Now, our district has a commitment to providing the best it can for its teachers, so we increased our salary and benefits by three percent. Our salary and benefits account for eighty-two percent of the general budget, so you do the math, significant cuts had to be made to make that happen. This is not your fault, this is not anybody's fault, it's the reality we live in. However, it is a sad state of affairs that we have to tell our teachers that you need to choose between a strong salary and benefits and low class size, or having the resource you need. That's, that's not some, that's not a choice that we should ask our teachers to make. And I think that, that's something to stress, because everybody's more than willing to thank teachers, but are people willing to communicate to their legislators to give the teachers the resources they need to do their job? And that's a fundamental question that I ask pretty much everybody that I talk to. And I'll use an example of this. When Westside, if you're familiar, Westside High School or Westside District, the school district had a budget problem and the elementary band program was on the chopping block, and filled up that auditorium with concerns about why they needed to preserve the band program, up to and including the CEO of the Omaha Symphony showed up to defend it. But how many of them went down to the Education Committee and testified about the need for funding for the West, for Westside schools? Because here's what happened. They preserved the band program, but at that point, the revenue shortfall for Westside still existed, so they cut Spanish in the elementary program, program instead, because they had to cut somewhere. So in relation to equity and funding, we need to confront the achievement gap. Administrator days, Commissioner Bloom said, you, you had the AQuest. I, I think it's, I, I think it was, I really appreciated the fact that as, for as many of those metrics that were strong, one of the things that you put up is one of the top things, is the fact that we have one of the highest achievement gaps in the country. So given the strength of our education system, what can we do to close that, I think is a, is a question. And the final thing I'll close on is just, again, expanding teacher voice. I had the chance earlier this year to meet with the commissioner. Dr. Freyson was there too, and we, we had a really good conversation about, as Teachers of the Year, formalizing our relationship with the Department of Education, having structured opportunities for us to talk to the commissioner about, these are concerns that we're seeing, these are things that we'd like to see, and even for him to talk to us and get our feedback. I think that that is probably, of all of those things, the thing that you, that you all, as a, as a state board and as a Department of Education, I think the thing that is the most achievable is to provide more opportunities for teachers to speak to you, to speak to the commissioner, to speak to other elements of the department. And again, not just for the benefit of the teacher, or not just for the benefit of you, but also for the benefit of teachers, because of, the more they understand that all the variables that go into decisions that are made, the, the better they can advocate for what they think is better for their classes. Because it's very easy for me to say, we need more money for schools. Right? That's, anybody can say that. But it's a lot harder to say that when there is a nine-figure shortfall for state revenue and all of those other issues, right? How do you navigate that issue when you are aware of all of those things? And so, I think that that's a mutually beneficial thing if we have expanded teacher voice. The last thing I want to say, and then if you have any questions, I do want to profoundly thank all of you for having the opportunity to, to, to serve as the Teacher of the Year this year. I consider it more of a privilege than an award, because I feel that our, my job fundamentally was to represent the teacher profession and to represent the state. Hopefully, you feel that I did that well. I hope to, I hope this is not the last time I get to converse with all of you in here, because again, I feel that maintaining good working relationships with you all is fundamental to head, to maintaining the strong education system that we have. So sincerely, thank you very much. Any questions?
Tim, thank you all. John, and then Glenn.
Congratulations, Tim, we're proud to have you here.
Thank you.
Quick question for you, in regards to the environment in the classrooms ever changing to technical, in regards to computers. Are the new teachers coming in able, if you will, grasp, if you will, the development of lessons and so forth with these new computers in the classrooms?
I think it is, it is certainly easier for them to do so, because, you know, the term that gets thrown around a lot is people, younger people are digital natives. However, just because you are able to use technology easy for your personal life does not necessarily mean you are able to easily use it for academic purposes. So, and I, I can actually speak very well to this, because in January in Millard, all high school students are going to be getting a computer. I'm actually part of a pilot program, my classes already have computers, so I've been training the other teachers to get them ready for that rollout. So yes, for sure, the younger teachers, the newer teachers, there's less of a learning curve. However, there still is definitely a need for training, because they need to see examples of how to actually execute and use technology in a way, because technology, like anything else, is a tool, and just learn how to use that tool well. So yes, it is easier, but there's still staff development that needs to happen.
Second question I have is in regards to our overworked teachers. I meant, they're so dedicated, they spend so much time in the classroom and out of the classroom with their students. I was wondering about professional development in regards to master's degree, their doctor's degree, to, if you will, continue their, their careers. Do you find it challenging after days to, if you will, continue on with your, your schooling?
Yeah, it, it certainly is a challenge. This is, I'm working on my second master's right now, my first master's was in history, the, the second one is in administration. And it certainly, it certainly does add an element. You have to cut back a little bit with what you do with the classroom, because you have to make time to, to make that happen, which is a challenge, but I think it's, it's a decision that needs to be made, because those degrees help me be better as a teacher. Even my administration work that I'm doing now, still helps me be an improved classroom instructor. And the, the rationale that I have to justify maybe not doing as much as I normally would is, this is my career, right? This is a lifetime. If for one year, maybe I have to scale it back a little bit, so I concentrate on classes, that's one year out of thirty. And I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Well, congratulations and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
You mentioned the social studies, we're not testing for that, so it's kind of getting ignored. We've been talking with folks from the Joe Foss Institute about that idea of having a civics exam, that, the same exam that naturalized citizens take, making that a graduation requirement. Just interested in your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think, and, and, and I actually give, or I, I did, we, we changed curriculum. I used to teach a world geography class, and when we discussed issues of immigration and citizenship, I would have my kids take the citizenship test, just to kind of see, to see how they did, and so they could see what it looks like. I would say that if there were to be an assessment for social studies, I would be more of a proponent of an assessment that tests their ability to think critically in the area of social studies, rather than in their general civic knowledge. Now, I want to be clear, though, that's not to say they shouldn't have basic civic knowledge, but rather than see if they can recall, what are the three branches, those kinds of things, they should write. Have them answer short response or essay questions that deal, present them with problems that the government has to resolve. See how, how they would approach that. You're a legislator, what would you do? What challenges would you overcome? I think that's a much better way to assess if kids are going to be able to function well as citizens that vote, is if they can take that knowledge and utilize it in some way and think critically about it. So, no, for sure, you know, every teacher says, well, it's, you know, less testing, that's great, but this, there should be some. And I think if, if it were to happen, it would need to be skill-based rather than content-based.
Well, so fun to hear you talk. I would have come to Lincoln just go to the Teacher of the Year luncheon today, that was just exceptional. I do have a lot, kind of a practical question. Obviously, you've learned a lot in your travels, and we, Laura's done so much work with you and you complimented Laura for helping make it easy for you. But as a board member, I'm wondering, what can we do as a board to better support the Teacher of the Year during your tenure? I, I, I think this is a good time to ask, especially with Amber in the room. I know that it takes a lot of your time.
Sure.
And what can we do to make it, to, I don't know, facilitate it to make your year a little easier on you?
Sure, I think, and maybe in a year from now, maybe Amber's going to disagree with what I'm about to say. I honestly don't think that it should, it needs to be made any easier. Given the application process, given the rigors of going in, you know you're about to, you're in for a, a year. I think that people that want to, that pursue this, pursue it willingly, because they know what's going to go into it. I think what you all can do as a state board, is to kind of go back to what I was saying, I, I think that we should be able to have a conversation more than just at the start and at the finish, because they are sharing with me a lot of information, they are training me in a lot of ways in terms of how to advocate and speak from my position as an educator. It would be wonderful if I had the chance to utilize that throughout the, throughout the year in more than just this capacity that I'm doing right now. And again, maybe she's like, no, this, we need help, maybe that's going to be what happens next year. But I, truly, I would say that. I think, because I know one of the questions that was raised in a conversation earlier had this year, you know, other states offer sabbaticals for their Teachers of the Year. I actually, I appreciate the fact that I wasn't given a sabbatical, because I, one, I probably would have dissuaded me from, from completing the application, because I would not have wanted to have been away from the classroom. But two, one of the strengths that I think of how Nebraska does it, is they give their Teachers of the Year the opportunity to basically make the year what they want it to be. Right? So like, you obviously heard from me that I did a lot more policy advocacy. Shelby in his prior year, he did a lot more of like math curriculum, content promotion, that was his angle. And so, I, I think the way it's set up, I actually think is really well done. That's my only piece that I would recommend, though.
Then, that, just a quick follow-up. Would you think maybe quarterly report would be okay, even if you couldn't come in person?
Yeah.
If, if it can be cool on Nebraska Department of Ed website to have a Teacher of the Year portfolio, so we could even Google topics and go and see what you're reporting? I didn't know if that would be too much to ask, but...
No, I don't, I don't think so at all. I think it would help, you know, again, I said, I perceive this as, as an, as an honor and as an ability to represent the teacher profession. I think a lot of people in the public see this as just like a nice award that you get and then you go on and do your thing. I think that would help show, not just you all, but more, that, that this is someone who is helping to serve as, as a voice for Nebraska, all Nebraska teachers. So yes.
Thank you so much, Tim. I am just totally in awe of all that you've accomplished in the perspective that you've brought to us today about your experiences over the last year. I think it will help us to be better, better board members, better in our role, and certainly remind us the importance of the voice of a teacher and the processes that we have in place and how we always need to keep that in our forefront. So thank you very much, Tim, for being here.
Thank you.
And just again, congratulations on your year. Next, we get the great honor and privilege of hearing from the 2017 Nebraska Teacher of the Year, Amber Blasnick. So Amber, please come forward. And just a little bit, Amber is a high school math instructional coach and has taught math at Lincoln High since 2011. Prior to that, she was at Lincoln Southeast High School in Lincoln and at Albright Middle School in Houston, Texas. So you were one of those that worked in a middle school as well.
Yes.
And so, congratulations, Amber. We appreciate that you're here today, we appreciate to have the opportunity to recognize you and the two recipients of the Excellence in Teaching Award today at the luncheon. And we appreciate that you're here and give you an opportunity to make some remarks, if you'd like, or ask us some questions. So again, thanks for being here.
Thank you. I didn't really come with anything prepared for today, because I really wanted to know that today is the first time I've met Tim and got his perspective on what my year's going to be like, and just getting excited and thinking about what my goals and what the perspective I bring will mean to being Teacher of the Year. So I guess, just a little background, I, I switched from Lincoln Southeast to Lincoln High as part of the High School Graduation Initiative Grant, which focused on raising the graduation rate. And my role was math interventionist. And so, in that role, I actually took a step away from the typical classroom and served as kind of an in-house tutor for students who struggled with math and were referred to me from their classroom teacher. And I would work with them one-on-one or in small groups of students for focused, individualized attention and instruction. And that was really eye-opening to me and challenging to me in different ways than being in the classroom every day. And it opened my eyes to how Tim kind of mentioned other leadership roles besides going into administration that teachers can have, and the support that I was able to give other teachers in my department. So because they didn't have to stress about having that student in and getting them the help they needed one-on-one, I was able to take a little bit of that burden away. I think that allowed them to focus on what was happening in their classroom, focus on their instruction, and utilize their planned time a little bit differently. And so, that type of hybrid teacher leader role really excites me. And I've kind of continued in that role. I spent two years as department chair and classroom teacher. And this is my first time this year as math instructional coach. And so, it's just a different leadership role that I'm able to be a support for teachers. And I'm in six different teachers' classrooms, helping them with instruction, helping them reflect and plan and come up with new ways to use the technology or use different cooperative learning activities and things like that. And I don't think that roles like that are always valued as much as they maybe should be. And I'm currently pursuing a PhD at UNL, focused on professional development, and how do we make that meaningful and useful for teachers? And so, one of the things I'm excited about for this year is the opportunity to explore that a little more and find out how do other states approach roles like that? And how can we support teachers in real and meaningful ways outside of a professional development one-hour session? And then you go to your classroom and you just have to survive day to day to day, and you never actually implement the new stuff that you learned, because you just don't have time for it. How can we support teachers as they try new things and giving, giving them the ability to try those things, mess up, try again, reflect on it, and keep, keep growing? Do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you, Amber, so much for being here. We will have questions. We've had a suggestion now. We may be intersecting with you a little more often.
What do you think about quarterly reports?
I think that's a great idea. One of the things I'm very excited about and passionate about is helping teachers build networks of supports among themselves. It's amazing to me how many teachers go through a day, a week, a quarter, a semester, a year without ever stepping foot in another teacher's classroom. I don't think we're learning from each other enough. And so, having networks of people, having a quarterly report, having more information and more ways to connect with each other and learn from each other, I think that can only benefit.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Amber, for being here. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we will take a break, a short, short, ten minutes, back at three, okay? The state board will reconvene and we're moving on to item three, which is meeting participation in joint meetings with policy partners, since we have had our last board meeting. So, anyone like to start off and share? John?
First of all, I'd like to comment, Dr. Franzen and I attended the Black Leadership Conference in Omaha recently. Also, I'd like to thank the Nebraska Association of School Board for their kind and very generous invitation to membership meeting. Congrats to all the local board members receiving awards and great presentations on budget planning in local school boards and updates on policy with an emphasis on security. I met with the Omaha NAACP Director about work being accomplished with the Achievement Gap, and she had some ideas and she wants to be engaged in regards to our actions. Very important, attended a conference at the Nebraska Workforce Development put on by the Department of Labor. Rich Cott really needs to provide this to one of the domain meetings or maybe even to the board itself in regards to sector partnerships. That is, one of the directions that the Department of Labor would like to go. And if you wonder what sector partnership means, it's somewhat equivalent to our revision process in regards to schools working together with community, businesses, and community Working with Jen Gottmuller at First Five of Nebraska regarding some funding questions regarding early childhood development and also some coordinated efforts with the Latino Center of the Midlands. Also, I'd like to acknowledge Bellevue University for their 50-year anniversary this last week. And one of the highlights of Bellevue University was they announced a new teacher education program that they are very, very proud of, that NDE is working with. So congratulations, Bellevue University, good luck to you. And just a reminder, Veterans Day is next week. Let's salute our veterans. And lastly, Teachers Appreciation Day at the SAC Museum on the 12th of November. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to report out? Pat?
Lily and I attended, and she's gonna talk too, attended Beyond School Bells Summit a week ago? Yeah. And this is the after-school program, 21st Century Learning thing that is supervised by the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation, and Jeff Cole has been here before and spoke to it. It was, I was very impressed with the fact that it wasn't the same as it was last year. There were different speakers, they addressed some different issues, and so you, you really kind of kept abreast of what was going on. Senator Mello spoke and spoke in regards to the things that he has tried to do in the legislature with juvenile justice programs. And the importance that these Beyond School Bell programs can play in the life of, of young people that are involved at the juvenile justice system. And whether it be something that they have gotten themselves into, or whether they are there through no fault of their own because of issues at home. And I, I thought about that a lot yesterday because I was at our local library for Read Loud Day. And there were two boys there, one boy was in middle school and the other boy was elementary. And the librarian told me later that those boys come into the library every day after school and they don't leave until seven o'clock, when the library closes. And they're being raised by their grandparents. And that seems to be a safe haven. And if we had those programs, you know, it, and, and they're trying, you know, I mean, Jeff's out there recruiting all of the time to bring more programs together. And I think communities really need to examine their community. It isn't anything that you have to build. The stuff is there. 4H is there. Y's are, YMCA's are there. Other programs in the community are there. It's just a matter of bringing them together and working with the school district. Jeff also commented on the rise in student achievement in the STEM areas because some schools, a lot of schools focus on that as part of their after-school, after-school program. And I know Lily was going to address a couple of the speakers as well.
Just as Pat said, they were very, very interesting and new speakers, whereas so frequently, we go to early childhood functions and it's repetitive and good, but repetitive. Whereas this time, another outstanding speaker was Dr. Greg Welch, who is from a research staff at UNL. And he looked into the issue, the return on investment, don't you love this, Patrick? Return on investment to these expanded learning opportunities. Notice, this is not extended learning activities, it's not after-school activities, it's expanded, expanded because we're talking about things that might be done for kids any time during the year, over holidays, could be after-school, could be in the summer. So, he had staff, he said, graduate students who initiated this research project, lo and behold, found there were only like, like maybe less than a dozen articles that have ever been published about the return on these expanded learning opportunities. I think I see something I want to work on, as a matter of fact. But he was just superb. Now, here's interesting, he has been enticed to join SAM myself, and so he is still involved with the, the university, but he will be working out of the institute. Pat?
One of the other comments that, that Dr. Welch made was the studies that have been done, they're looking at financial investment, you know, what are we getting back for money? And these studies range from like a dollar and 12 cents to maybe $12.47. So it's just, nobody really knows.
That's correct. The amount, on average, is, runs about $3.36 return for every dollar that's invested in an expanded learning opportunity. So, the biggest return is, as you might guess, in California, where it's like $12, but it cost them more to start the program anyway. But it was just a superb conference. Can I also report out about...
Please, continue to report.
Several of us went to NASB, and I was your delegate, and Molly, bless her heart, stayed with me through most of the discussion. There was the election of the new president, who will take office, I believe, January 1st. John Kelly, who, he just was so impressive. I thought, you have an opportunity to go to a NASB conference this next year. There are some regional conferences going on right now, as a matter of fact. And I wondered why they were doing those, having just had the national, but I suppose to reach some people who couldn't get to the national. There was also the successful election of a Mr. Lentz, who is our regional director. So those occurred. There was a controversial vote that took place, and I think at that point Molly was called elsewhere, but stayed there through this. And what it was, is to change the titles of the president and president-elect of the Board of NASB to be changed to Chair and Chair-Elect. Then the title of Executive Director would become President. The reason for this proposal was that it says it reflects what is currently being what is currently being done in the business world and is regarded as a change. That will facilitate better communication with NASB's business partners. Time will tell. It passed. So, then the comment from the former president from Colorado, she said, "I'm chair," was chair. "Are you going to go back and change all the records?" There was no answer. So, I, time will tell on that, too. I presume they leave the records as is. But then it became, in this conversation that went on a while, they kept referring to the president/CEO. Well, after a while, I just had to say something. And I said, "Is the new title president or president/CEO?" You've been using CEO. And they, then the gentleman from Arkansas, I think, was, said, "She's right. It is president/CEO." So, that's the new title for the former chair of NASB. So, when you receive mailings, you will see this new title. It went into effect immediately. So. Yes, Patrick?
Did you have any other report out, Lily?
Say what?
Did you have a question or did you have anything else to report out?
No, that's all the interesting things I had.
I think that was much to do about nothing, frankly.
Thank you for letting me be the delegate.
From what I have seen of these things, you know, and I've served on several local boards, you know, the person that's the executive director is considered the president and is titled president in most of the ones I've been involved with. I just report back a few things that I've been involved with. I attended Platte Institute Legislative Forum and they've got some ideas about legislation and education that they're gonna be talking about and bringing to the legislature. Nebraska Association School Board meeting, or their awards meeting as well. NASB, I'll mention that in just a second. Glenn and I, I think, both have had an opportunity over the last few days to deal with, discuss the issue of diabetes and possibility of a diabetes buster program. And I think we're going to be hearing from somebody tomorrow in their five-minute presentation on that, as well as we've met with Cora Schrader from Pith's and Company regarding the civics issue that's gonna be discussed, I think, tomorrow in one of your sessions. And I listened in on the NASB webinar the other day on school climate and school discipline. And I thought that was really, really interesting. And something that really struck me out of that was that children with disabilities are twice, are suspended at twice the rate that other children are. I thought that was really, really kinda interesting. Just a thing about today, I really enjoyed today, but I had kind of an interesting experience there. I was sitting with a couple teachers and, you know, I don't know that we all think about this. And, you know, for me, it's probably not coming out of academia, per se. But when the teachers start talking about the fact that they've, in a fairly prosperous district, have a homeless child that has, really has no home. He's staying with a, somebody that his mother's got a mental disease. He doesn't know who his father is. He's staying with somebody that supposedly is his brother, but really isn't, depending on him for food, sleeping on couches. And how those teachers are, they're providing him clothes and they're providing him an opportunity to take a shower and things like that, you know? That really strikes home, I think. So, I, that's just kind of a, aside from that meeting today. But I was just, you know, I just don't know that we can say enough again about what teachers do. So, with that, I did attend the NASB meeting, a conference in Kansas City. It was my first opportunity to do that. Thought we had a couple great speeches, you know? One by Terrence Roberts, who was part of the Little Rock Nine. Very, very impressive speech. Another by Marty, excuse me, I'm sorry. I've got it here somewhere, I wrote it.
Manny Scott?
Manny Scott, on part of the Freedom Riders. Those were very impressive. I also had the opportunity to attend a number of seminars on education and other things. But for those who weren't there, here's a couple handouts. Seven Tenants or Sustainable School Turnaround. I don't know whether, did you get one of those?
I did not.
Okay, and I've got one over there to send?
I already give the.
Okay. And then, you know, another one that I thought was really impressive on technology. We talk about virtual reality. And, you know, you see these ads on TV where they're putting on this big headset and, you know, you're thinking, boy, that's probably cost $300. Here's a virtual reality piece. And you just open it up like this. Let me see if I can do this right, Glenn.
You've got it.
Have I got it right? And then you just simply, where's my phone? You put your phone in here and you got a virtual reality. Something, I've not put this together right. Because I can't see. You're supposed to look on this side. But VR, Discovery VR and Little Star. And it's amazing because it's a teaching tool that, very inexpensive, and yet, you know, allows kids to ask questions. They're in the middle of Africa, watching elephants, or they're wherever. And we kinda think of this as just strictly entertainment. But these are, you know, these are wonderful tools and it's inexpensive. So, there's one for you. And if you download the Discovery VR.
Boy, this is like Christmas.
John, I don't know whether you got one of those? I don't, let's see. Give one to Matt, yeah? How about you, Lily? Did you get one? Well, you got one now. But, you know, again, it's just another form of learning. And again, you think of all the, we hear about how expensive some tools are. And here's something that, very inexpensive, that really can have an impact on children and engage them, engage them in learning. So, for whatever it's worth, I just wanted to share that. So, thank you. I've got another one if somebody else wants one.
I heard hers, yeah.
Okay, we'll continue on. Glenn?
I was just gonna say that Molly handed me her VR goggles and I was standing out in the middle of the plains. I couldn't figure out what the big deal was. And then I turned around, there was a lion behind me. In VR, you gotta look everywhere. So, I enjoyed the NASB conference. One of the presentations I attended was on authentic stakeholder engagement under ESSA. And I think that's something that a lot of states are starting. How can we get stakeholders engaged? I mentioned that because the previous Saturday, I'd been to the Nebraska Dyslexia Association Fall Celebration. And I was very impressed by their presentation. I met someone there that I'm trying to get down here to talk to us about some pending legislation that would do early screening for dyslexia and intervention. And also, some of the current research and how it can inform our teaching practices. So, I would like to, you know, continue to explore how we can get together and count that as our, as a stakeholder engagement to form up a committee or somebody to get the word out on that sort of thing. And then I also attended the Nebraska Association of State Boards, or School Boards, sorry. I rushed in, just as Matt rushed out. But a great, a great meeting and a lot of hard work there at the local school board level. Recognize.
Molly?
I won't repeat anything that's been already spoken toward. I was invited to this Evening of Early Childhood Discussion and Celebration and it was in Kearney's. So, it was just a skip and a jump from North Platte. And the Gallup, Gallup has combined with the Buffett Early Childhood Institute and they've done a survey about Nebraska's speak about early care and workforce, education workforce. And I'm just gonna highlight the three top points. Nebraskans recognize and value the early childhood care and education workforce. 66% of Nebraskans say that these are best when families cannot care for their own children during the day. And about, excuse me, half of Nebraska parents have turned to schools or teachers and childcare providers for information. And they want the most current practice, best practice in developmentally appropriate childcare. 52% of Nebraska residents recommend a career in early care and education field to family and friends. And this increases to 77% among respondents who are early childhood teachers or caregivers. This shocked me because early childhood care and teachers oftentimes make less than 20,000 a year. And three-fourths of them said they would do it again. So, they have a passion for children. The second big takeaway in this executive summary is Nebraskans believe that post-secondary education is needed for those who wanna work in early care and education. And at least half of them think that they need at least some post-secondary education. And Melody is not in the, Melody is in the room. And I visited with her this morning and she was also saying that there are some grants available for people that are teachers, working full-time, to continue getting their certification. So, that's good to know. Nebraskans also believe that how much needed is, depends on the age of the child. I thought it was kind of funny, zero to three, they think probably don't need as much education as three to five. But really, it's zero through eight. They all need at least, their recommendation is at least one certified teacher in the center. And then, our Teacher of the Year is now gone, but they said the teachers teaching teachers is a good way. If you just have one certified, it can, it can spread to the other work. The third thing at the executive summary was they want greater support for early care and education workforce. And they believe that they're paid too little, which may not come as a surprise. More than half the parents with children in early care and education centers say that we need to make sure that if they get their certification, that we pay them accordingly. And I was, I was a panelist on the policymaking section and I was with various STEAM people. And when I was driving down, I was thinking, these are all the experts. I kinda was, you know, hoping I would represent as well. But Pat Timms gave me a lot of early childhood conversation. I also went to the NASB conference. And I'm not going to highlight the things that people have already spoken about, but I did wanna give you an update on two things. The NASB stipend update, some of us went to that. And online, thank you so much for your PowerPoint. And it is available for those of you if you did not attend. And I think Nebraska did a good job. I think all our board members that were there, really, we kinda contributed, I guess. And basically, the stipend update is available and accessible for our citizens as well. The other thing I was going to highlight is on the GAC, Positions of an Advocacy. We also responded to the ESSA Title I Request for Information. And we wanna continue supporting state and local leadership from the nation's lowest-performing schools. Earlier, Tim said Nebraska is one of the top nations that have that gap and it still exists. So, I really hope our leadership does focus on kinda removing that gap. And then also, we're encouraging support for states to acquire technology required to implement these innovative assessments and use Title I funding for high-quality early learning. And then we talked a lot about ESSA accountability and state plan revisions at GAC. And they were impressed that our AQuest seemed to be in lockstep with expectations. So, the Government Affairs Committee also was impressed that Nebraska has had the forethought to really utilize management and governance to work together. We also reiterated about student data privacy. This is the one concern we wanted to say to all of you policymakers. We want privacy and we want security, but we need effective use of data that supports student achievement and allows efficient operation of schools. If it gets too closed down, you can't access the data that will advance student achievement. So, let's continue to safeguard privacy, security, and accuracy and make sure the right people are able to access it to fund decisions. And then we also had some comments on the 2017 Appropriations Priorities. And we really want to continue to support 15.3 billion for ESEA Title I formula grants. These are for those low-income students that Pat was talking about and expanded learning opportunities. We need to really make sure that we help these needy students in school districts. And then 2.4 billion for ESEA Title II. This is back to what Amber was talking about, professional development. And there's also a new 3% state-level set-aside for principal and leader-focused professional development. And then 11.9 billion for individual disabilities, IDA formula grants to increase the federal share per pupil expenditure. If you look at the statistics, our IDAs, students eligible for IDA are not being fully funded at this point. And we need to continue to meet the requirements of the current law. And only two more things. 350 million for the preschool development grants program to ensure existing grantees get their final year of funding and opportunity for HHS to make new grants. And GAC, all across the nation, they're saying high-quality early learning lays a foundation on which children develop skills to advance through the system and become productive citizens. So, we hope that these preschool development grants are used accordingly. And Melody's smiling. So, and disadvantaged children stand to gain the most from these because they're the ones that have the most serious gaps and the early intervention helps. And the last one is there's 81 million for the state longitudinal data systems grants. And we are highlighting that continued resources are gonna be required to strengthen and improve our data systems. And I know in our, today on our Student Access and Success Domain, we are talking about make sure we have effective data for teaching, learning, and decision-making. And the last thing we talked about was Perkins Act reauthorization. And if you have time, the Talking Points for Kansas is online.
Thank you. Just a couple of.
Could I mention, I'm going to have copy made of this, put at your place. And what is, it's a listing of all statewide where the community expanded learning programs are provided. And on the back, it even lists the schools. So, it will tell you where it is. Okay, that was handed out at the after-hours.
Just a couple of things that I wanna add to. I also attended the NASB Area Regional Meeting. And I just want everyone to put on their calendar the pre-conference that's on November 16th, before the, November 16th, before the NASB conference. I think that would be a great activity to attend. The Commissioner's been involved also in the planning, but that'll be a part of the report-out of some of the processes that the regional meeting was in gathering information. And NCSA, the Commissioner, and NASB is involved in planning that pre-conference afternoon session. So, you might wanna double-check with Laura and make sure, if you can attend, I think that would be very valuable to be there to listen and learn as a part of that process. I also attended, I know a couple of us have attended the Career Education Stakeholder Engagement Meetings. I attended one in Norfolk here about a week, week and a half ago. And if you haven't attended any of those, I've asked Cory and Ryan to try to find some of the materials that they use so that each of you can get a copy of the materials. It's really good background information about career education in Nebraska. And it also, including the questions and the process, they'll get a report once they're done. But they really did a great job in engaging stakeholders to have conversations about very important topics related to career education. And though this is more about career education and potentially Perkins, I think it also gives a model of another element of stakeholder engagement that's happening in Nebraska that may have impact for us, for ESSA as well, to think about what we learn from various stakeholder kinds of meetings and stakeholder engagement. So, they'll get you some information for those of you that weren't able to attend any of those sessions at some point. I also attended NASB and was part, I've chaired the Public Education Position Committee. And that committee is transitioning a little bit to be similar to the Governmental Affairs Committee. It'll have more statewide representation. Part of the approach for NASB for making those changes
Part of the approach for NASB for making those changes is to really make sure we're capturing the board voice across the country. As we look at the transition with Essa, I think one of the themes that we really heard throughout is what our responsibility as board members will be in ensuring the direction that we go, not only is in the old thinking compliance, but really is in what we believe is most important for meeting the needs of students in Nebraska. And so I think there's a lot of elements there and I saw so many of those sessions were interwoven around those particular themes of Essa that were pretty important. The other piece that was brought up is the stakeholder engagement regional meetings. And so those regional meetings were for stakeholder engagement and I know Glenn, you had sent an email about this as well. I would say probably within the next week or two, the commissioner and I talked just a little bit about this, that we'll try to get a little more information and determine how we approach putting some teams together because the intent, from my understanding of the stakeholder engagement regional meetings, is to bring a team together to really think about and to add maybe some different perspectives about how your state is going to be strategic and long-term in their processes for stakeholder engagement. And I know we had several sessions that that crossed over. The two dates that might be realistic for some sort of teams to go would be the December sixth date, which is in Washington DC, or the January seventeenth is in Atlanta, Georgia. The Denver, Colorado date is pretty close to a board meeting. It's the Wednesday, February second before our board meeting. So I think if we try to have a team go, it should probably be maybe on either the December sixth and/or January seventeenth date as we gather some more information about that. We'll make sure we keep you posted on that and keep us posted in your interest in expanding our thinking around stakeholder engagement. Tomorrow, there will also be a presentation about Essa and some of the stakeholder engagement pieces. The other thing that came up, I think most of us saw NASB as an aha, was next year's annual conference dates have changed. So next year's annual conference coincides with our board meeting. So we need to think about discussing whether or not we want to change our board meeting to allow for individuals to go. I believe we still are in the grant throughout next year, basically, and so we do have funding for a team to go, except we happen to have our board meeting at the same time. As we look at the next week, the dates would be November, probably November eighth and ninth, a Wednesday and Thursday, because the tenth is Veterans Day and I'm thinking that's probably not a good day for us to have our board meeting for a variety of reasons. One, I'm not sure if the lights are on in this building. So I would propose that we think about November eighth or ninth. We won't make a decision today.
Twenty seventeen?
Twenty seventeen.
The eighth's a Wednesday.
Yes. It would move to Wednesday and Thursday because Friday is Veterans Day. So we shouldn't have a Friday state holiday. It's a state holiday. And Tuesday, though, there may not be much impact with Election Day. It, there could be-
There is no Election Day in Nebraska.
There, I didn't know if there was anything on ballots, like even local issues. Local issues might have some things on ballot, so I think again, the Wednesday and Thursday would probably be the two dates to think about-
Makes sense.
In November. So be thinking about those dates and we'll take action on that, probably in the December meeting when we look at the full calendar as a whole in the December meeting. Any other report-outs? You've got a lot of things coming up, so make sure, if you haven't already put a request in for upcoming meetings, please make sure that you do so. We will talk a little bit tomorrow about our upcoming presentation at NASB and we'll have that conversation, we're reporting out with strategic planning tomorrow as well, so we'll have that discussion tomorrow. And you also have then your monthly board travel expense report is in your file of materials as well. We are now moving to item three. So Commissioner, we'll allow you to give a report in agenda overview, yes.
We still have a meeting, is what I'm telling you. No, I'll go very, very quickly. So just a reminder of the consent agenda process, if you have something, yeah, Glenn.
I just wanted to ask you about eight point six B on the consent agenda, if somebody could just explain this one.
Yeah, so we can get the right folks for you tomorrow morning, would that work? So, and maybe go ahead and fill out a little form anyway, just in case you wanted to pull it off, so. So, yeah, it's a pink form, I think, right?
Yeah, I think, I believe Scott also has in the little box.
So yeah, you go ahead and fill out a form on that and then we'll, we'll get the right staff person for that. And then the, the other kind of components of the, you know, kind of review of the agenda, and I don't know how much Donlin has, I was just going to ask her, do you have a lot to report on? Not really, so we might be able to bypass some of that. The, the report on rules, there are just a couple of things in that rules update. Actually, I think I was able to report last time about Rule Four because it was signed out the week of the last board meeting. So that happens to be in the written form on here. But also Rule, I'm going to pull off top of my head, Rule forty-three. And I think we sent a note out to you, the, due to kind of a technical issue, we're going to have to go back to, not the complete drawing board, but we'll have to go through the hearing process again and bring something back. There was a, something in statute for many years ago, although we weren't impacting that within our change of this particular rule. It was something the AG said that's now a requirement that we need to go back and change, so we'll do that and bring that back forward for you for on that particular rule at a later date, so. Otherwise, that's all I'll dive into right now.
Okay, and Donlin has no report then today for anything?
I just wanted to thank the board for going to the stipend session, so.
Yeah, and one other, one other thing, I mean, I know it's a slight agenda change, we'll do a presentation on the strategic planning part with the Essa Plan tomorrow. Kind of tie those two things together for you so you can kind of see that whole, that whole package of information, so.
And at the rate we're going today, we wouldn't have had time today. So moving on to now, item four. Standing ad hoc committee reports, we'll start with Teaching and Learning Domain Committee. Maureen, I turn the floor over to you.
Yes. The Teaching and Learning Domain Committee, we met this morning and the agenda included five action items and a number of discussion items. The first action item is to grant the commissioner the authority to contract with Cooter Incorporated for the continuation of providing Nebraska Career Connections to Nebraska school districts. And I'm going to turn this over to Glenn to share a summary of that discussion.
Thank you, Maureen. The Nebraska Career Connections is used statewide by over two hundred and twenty school districts for career planning and career development. The committee recommends passing this motion in order to continue to provide the services of Nebraska Career Connections to all Nebraska school district students and families. Any questions? Back to you, Maureen.
All right. The next action item that we discussed is to grant the commissioner the authority to amend the contract with the Magnet Group. And Glenn, this is yours again.
All right. Well, thank you, Maureen. The Magnet Group is currently under contract to allow the Nebraska, to develop the Nebraska Workplace Experiences website. This motion would allow the original contract to be amended for the contractor to develop training webinars aligned to the Nebraska English Language Arts Standards instructional tool. The amendment also changes the end date of this contract and the amount. The committee recommends passing this motion.
Does anybody have any additional questions related to this action item? Okay, moving on. The next three action items are the approvals of the High School Career Education Standards related to the areas of communication and information systems, human sciences, family and consumer sciences, and education and training. And again, Glenn, back to you.
Thank you, Maureen. This is like the nightly news. These standards were presented last month for board review. Since last month, there were minor edits to the Communication and Information System standards as a result of teacher input, and I will hand those out right now. We'll go that way. The revised draft is posted in e-meetings and there are paper copies available. You'll notice that there are standards for computer science within communication and information system. These standards provide a framework for computer science instruction at the high school level. The committee recommends passing these three motions to approve these standards.
Are there any questions related to these action items? Seeing none, there were a number of discussion items on the committee agenda. The committee received an update on recommendations made by the Teacher and Principal Evaluation State Board Committee. The Teaching and Learning Committee will just continue to discuss this topic at future meetings. An update was provided on ACT testing, including test dates and workshops. And Rachel and Lilly will provide some brief information on the ACT update and there is a handout on information for board members.
Lilly and I did a little arm wrestling and it looks like I lost. So we're handing out to you, Valerie did a great job in updating some of the test dates and activities that are underway for ACT testing this year. We just wanted to share that information with you. They've got a host of workshops that are planned. They've done survey to come up with the dates that best met the needs of our schools. They've got a webinar and some training on the accommodations that are coming up. They also have, ACT has set up a specific website for Nebraska and it's linked through NDE website, so again, another great resource for our schools. We'll be spending more time next month on assessment and updates on ACT and updates on where we're moving with NESA and with the information that's being gathered on some of our other potential changes in assessment. So we didn't want to take too much time today on assessment, but we'll spend a little more time next month on assessment.
Lilly, did I miss anything?
The only thing is that there were three dates to choose from for the testing and the one that was selected was April the nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, which I think is terrific because it's during the week, it's on a school day. In the past, it's been on a weekend and that sometimes conflicts with proms. At any rate, it makes it harder, makes it more focused and school district can, if they don't want to do it in their school building, they make arrangements to take students elsewhere. So I think it's a win-win situation.
Do I look, I look at the notes, sorry.
Molly? Yeah. I just have a question on the ACT. I know that there's a paper testing data on the nineteenth of April, but online, there's a window for online and accommodations for the nineteenth and third. Can a district have some kids take it by paper and some kids do it online? Does that, is that?
I can answer it, I think, quickly and see if we get a heading out over there, that districts are actually able to select, and I think it's school by school, am I correct, for whether their school goes paper, pencil, or online, but they have to go one way or the other? There are accommodations for certain students, if they decide to go online, that would be paper, pencil, I believe that's allowed, so.
Okay, and then also, are we including in that ACT on April nineteenth a writing component?
Yes.
Yes, that was part of our agreement.
Yes. And that went well.
And this month, our board, our committee, Domain Committee actually meets again tomorrow after the board meeting. We are having a meeting with Senator Crist to talk on the topic of civics education. Madam President, it's back to you.
All right. Thank you. I'm liking this new process. So next we move on to the Student Success and Access Domain Committee and I turn it over to Molly, so.
And I don't, do you need to, let me give you-
I send it to you.
You emailed it to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need me to give you-
Turn your mic on.
Yeah. Do you need me to give you a copy?
Yeah. Else I can pull up on my email. The first thing, we, after we called order, we have three action items that, four action items that are going to come to your attention to vote. The first one, two point one, is to grant the commissioner the authority to approve the contract with UNL to develop and deliver nutrition service trainings and technical assistance to all Nebraska schools. And Zainab, she's not here either, but Zainab, she is awesome in talking about this nutrition. It seems that it's been happening on the eastern side of the state in our more urban schools, but what they're trying to do now is to deliver nutrition service trainings across the state. And it will deal both for students that are eligible for SNAP and the regular student population. And it even goes to their expanded learning opportunities, what they're selling at games and in rooms and things like that. So we'd asked your approval, the committee all voted in favor of that. Two point two, action item, is adopt the proposed revision to Rule Fifty-One, Regulation and Standards for Special Education Programs. This is kind of a language cleanup moment, so there's not a lot to be said about that. Yes?
The way I read it, some language got inadvertently removed and then that caused some sort of reimbursement, Snafu.
Well, can you address that, Commissioner?
How did we do that?
Yeah, so we're really coming back with Rule Fifty-One, it's kind of that type of technical change and the intention of, you know, getting that cleared up, that particular language. And I think generally on rules, our hope in the future is to kind of be able to take on other issues as well, so when we have to bring something through. But this one, I think staff thought it was important to get that clarified so we didn't have that type of reimbursement issue in the future.
Yes, I just have a question. I don't know if you spent much time in talking about the revision to Rule Fifty-One. We've had a lot of discussion at a board level and it's been brought forward of issues with meeting the needs of students with dyslexia or learning disabilities, earlier screenings. Was there any discussion about any other kinds of process changes or a timeline for looking at and evaluating, you know, whether or not there's some areas of better serving, in fact, even early intervention or developmental needs of kids through Rule Fifty-One?
Well, Pat brought up the point about twice as many kids with special needs are kicked out of school. So obviously, earlier intervention would be a good, good point of intervention. Do you want to address that question?
And I think that's from a kind of a process standpoint, that what they brought forward was that, that particular change and when we want to interject other potential changes into Rule Fifty-One. I know that Steve Milliken and Amy Roan were organizing a set of other things that will need to be considered. I anticipate some conversations next month. That would include, we have something tapping on deaf and hard-of-hearing conversations, we've had conversations about dyslexia. And so it might be one of those moments in time where we start to think about our process and how we would bring other conversations forward as rules start for like this one, kind of a technical change, right? I mean, the intention of that. But when we would do that and how we would bring those conversations forward, I think is our point.
All right. Any other questions on Rule Fifty-One, which is action item two point two? Okay, let's move to two point three. This is to authorize the commissioner to contract to conduct nutrition services administrative reviews of local education agencies as required by the National School Lunch Program. And Diane is in? No. The USDA changed monitoring cycle from five years to three years. We just found that the three-year cycle was a more efficient way of addressing the needs to analyze the nutrition services. And they had a hundred and sixteen administrative reviews that need to be conducted. And twenty of these have to be completed by this contractor, so the remaining reviews would be completed by NDE staff and each of these reviews takes a full day. This two point three action item, if you look at it, there is an additional expenditure that is, that is included in this. And let me get to it. Okay, it says over fifty thousand, but I think it was like a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Hundred and fif- yeah.
I think that's what it, yeah, a hundred and thirteen thousand. But our committee voted to approve this. We want to, the state to adhere to this schedule and we felt that that was, price was reasonable. Okay, let's move to two point four, action item. This is to grant the commissioner the authority to approve an amendment to-
This is to grant the commissioner the authority to approve an amendment to contract 37103 with Janice Lee, a pyramid coach. And Melody Hobson is here in case you do have questions. For those of you that might not be familiar with, with this pyramid coach, what it is, do you remember last year and the year before, we talked a lot about PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports for K-12 Education? The pyramid coach actually deals with early childhood and it's looking at the whole child. And the pyramid coach will be working with schools to make sure that it is not just developmentally appropriate in a cognitive way, but also social, emotional supports in place. And that the teachers working with these little kiddos will have pyramid, meaning one teaches two and two teach. And Melody, do you want to come and, and kind of expand upon that? And the funding is going to come from Special Education B, $619. And they have to complete the coaching for the pyramid model.
The, the pyramid is, is a multi-tiered system of support. And, and the bottom is actually called an effective workforce. And so that is where the, the, the coaching comes in. And I needed to make clear that this was her, the, the contract was doing pyramid coaching, but also we were going to add some additional things to that, some additional like step-up coaching as well. So the multi-tiered system, it's very analogous to what Special Education is doing for their, their actions in K-12. But the pyramid itself is, it's effective coaching. It's universal interventions for all young children, social, emotional, behavioral, explicit teaching. Then there's the level of kind of the, the additional supports for some children. And then the, the top of the pyramid is for the kids who need some specific behavioral support. And then, so Janice Lee is a coach for the pyramid, but this also adds some additional coaching to that. And so there will be a combination of funding. That's why I did not make clear during the, the.
Domain meeting.
Domain meeting, yeah.
When you, I asked you the question, the domain, if this would just be with the, they had started. And she said, actually, the pyramid works within school programs. But with a step up to quality, we'll be working with the same supports, but it's.
It, it works, it works very much in tandem with some of the requirements for step up to quality. But as we were talking in the domain meeting, the actual pyramid model, doing full implementation of the pyramid model is also something that Root and Relationships does with the nurturing healthy behaviors grant that you have approved for the, and the last two Januaries.
Yeah. And, and one thing on a positive note, Pat's always talking about early childhood. There's so many different partners and everybody kind of has their own way. But actually, Nebraska's starting to systemically bring people together and, and all working in coordination. So thank you for your leadership in that regard. 3.1, action item is the next one. And this is a discussion item. And as the work session, we're supposed to give summary reports of action items and discussion. I did want to let you know, 3.1 was an update on NDE information and activities regarding personalized learning plans and what, what role a digital pack back or portfolio would play. We just had some preliminary discussion because next month, we're actually going to have the experts at NDE there, that are there with, Rich Cott will be there to talk about what he already has from Bruteck Education, personalized learning plan that can be modified. Dean Folkers is there to talk about the data, the security, the privacy, and how it can be accessed for a student to have a personalized learning plan. And then we also are having a specialist talk about the difference between a personalized learning plan and individualized learning plan and differentiated instruction. And there, and there is a difference. I admire Commissioner, how you've, how you've really brought that to be interwoven with AQUEST. And I, in our discussion, we also did bring about, that was the number one tech question for districts, is what, how do we support the personalized learning plan? So we will be doing more of that. And 3.2 is the last discussion item, review state board policy B5 on state board committees on the description of AQUEST Student Success and Access Committee. And we just left it for the committee members to let us know if they're, Jo-Lene or me, know if they had any recommended changes. And Madam President, that's it for student success and access.
Thank you, Molly. Next, we'll move on to the report from the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee. John Whittall.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much. Thank you for the committee. Thank you, Lilly. Thank you, Rachel, for the, the work we've been working toward, the appraisal. I want to thank the board for submitting your appraisal evaluations to me in a timely manner. We've accumulated all of them. We put them together and tomorrow, we'll be having an executive session to discuss our appraisals. Also, we'll be discussing the employment agreement with the commissioner at that time. So it'll be a busy morning and, but thank you very much for your inputs.
All right, moving on to item four, Policy Committee. Pat, Tim.
As stated last month, the Policy Committee is reviewing the G policies and those are our general education policies. We're reviewing them individually and determining with NDE staff and research and input whether this is truly a policy or is, does it need to be transitioned into a position statement? And today, we heard from staff on our current G policy on expanded learning opportunities. And we also had some proposed position statements on assessment standards, digital or virtual, virtual learning and student equity. And these are going to go back to staff for discussion and will continue early into next year. There, several of these are, are not in a position yet that they're going to run, the policy's going to run out. And then, of course, the standards and, and assessment is, is new discussion. D7, the professional personnel hiring is up for a four-year review. The statute has changed and the Policy Committee recommends bringing D7 to the board for adoption in December. And all it does is, is change the language so that it matches the statute. State Board Policy B5, board committees. We have added another standing committee that will be Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement. We've talked a lot in strategic planning and also on the board that we don't, we, we want to recognize that the strategic plan is a working document and that we don't want to lose sight of where we are with it and are we following what we said we would and are we evaluating ourselves on a regular basis? And so there, that will be a new standing committee. And we will, that'll be on the December board agenda as well. So you can see how that, how that looks. We agreed to the proposed revisions from the Budget and Finance Committee regarding Policy D6, Contracts, Grants, and Purchases. They recommended increasing the $25,000 that we have with grants and purchases to be raised to $50,000 before there's review. And then there was also D13, which is the audit of the Nebraska Department of Education. And it was suggested that those audits first come to the Finance Committee for review and then a report being, they report out to the full board instead of just having the audit done and laid up on the shelf. So we're really using our Finance Committee to, to review those things. And those policies will be on the December board for adoption. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions, Pat, in the Policy Committee? If not, we'll move on to Legislative Committee. Lilly?
Madam President, committee consisting of Molly, Glenn, John. It's on. I'll speak louder. Committee consisting of Molly, Glenn, John, and myself. Brian Halsted was in attendance as well as some of his staff. And what we were looking at is the issue of the enrollment option. And we have, the committee reviewed a draft of suggested changes to State Board Policy B17 on appointment of a hearing officer that included new language for the commissioner to appoint. This is with the commissioner's agreement to do this. To appoint a hearing officer on the enrollment option appeals by parents so as to be more expedient in doing this process. Whereas before, when it would be filed, it may very well wait till there is a board meeting to do the filing. This way, it would be filed promptly. And what it would do, it would be a benefit then also to the parents in getting a decision and benefit children in the long run to know if they have an option. Members did ask, John in particular, asked for staff to provide an alternative draft that would have the expediated process applied to all contested cases. And that we will, in December, review these two drafts versions and then decide if we think this should be then forwarded to the State Board Policy Committee. But I think it's, this is all resulted because of Glenn's expressing the concern he's heard from folks about this option enrollment just taking way too long. And this seems like a reasonable process. But then at the same time, John said, well, maybe this could apply to more cases too than just the enrollment. So more to come. Second item, we looked at, the committee reviewed Board Policy B5. And we do not recommend any changes to that for the Legislative Committee. Item three that we looked at is something you'll want to put on your calendars. And that is, we recommend that the State Board have the date for the legislative retreat on Monday, January 23rd. There are lots of pluses to that time. It's in the sequence of events that occur with legislature being in session, with bills having been introduced, with the first reading of the bills in education are on the 23rd. And so if this proposed di- date approves, meets with the satisfaction by the board, the staff, the chair of the committee will proceed to make these arrangements for the reception for senators on that day. Could very well be a breakfast meeting. Any comment about that? The last item that we looked at was much more complicated and it has to do with the dictates coming down from the U.S. Department of Education. And that coming up next Monday, we are to have submitted and a concern or express why it is difficult to comply with the reporting on Title I funds in schools. Because ESA now says, and finance folks can nod if I'm saying this correctly, that they want it by school. And this is not something that has been done before. It turns out it could very well be very complicated for school districts. It gets involved with all their other type of financial reports. And so we did agree that the letter, which has been prepared by the commissioner, would be signed by the president of the board, that it would be sent to the Department of Education saying, we understand that you want data, but this, in this form, is going to be very difficult to provide and very expensive to do. Think about some other course of action. So any questions? Committee, anything?
Just that, did, we asked for a, a one-year delay because we don't give the data on that.
That's right. We did ask for, Molly suggested that, that we ask for a delay in the report if we have to do this. So they want it now, of course. Thank you, committee.
Thank you, Lilly. Any questions? The Strategic Planning Committee has met a couple of times and we're slow in getting a little bit of our work done. So, and we were running out of steam last night a little bit. So we are going to be spending more time on the strategic planning report tomorrow. So the Strategic Planning Committee will meet for a few minutes tonight and then we'll plan to report tomorrow. I do want to thank the committee for all the time they've put in over the past month if we've really tried to finalize some of the goals that we'll be sharing with you tomorrow. And the committee is Lilly Larson, Pat McPherson, Pat, Tim. Again, appreciate all of your time and in particularly, the time that staff has dedicated to this process as we have continued to evolve and have discussions. Don Lynn has been instrumental in, in leading the process. Matt Hastings, Russ, and Atwell have really pulled pieces together to help us understand what data is available. A lot of our discussion has been around making sure that what we do, we have data available and that it's not necessarily a new burden or an added burden. You know, Carol has been helpful in keeping things moving and Lindy. So again, we appreciate the entire NDE team that's been involved. And tomorrow, we will have a report to you. And we will have some preliminary recommendations for you tomorrow. And then we will also have a little bit of a map, a time map over the next month of some to-do items that all of us will have as board members. So we'll report out tomorrow on strategic planning. Next, we move to Budget and Finance. John Whittall.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Before I begin, I'd like to thank our accounting team of Bryce Wilson and Shane Ryan in regards to all the outstanding support work they've done with us these past few weeks. Also, I'd like to thank fellow committee members, Rachel Wise, Lilly Larson, Patrick McPherson, for outstanding work. Thank you very much. We have one action item. The nomenclature for it is approve revised 2017 to 18, 18 to 19 budget modifications. And if I may read a summary or abstract of that. The Finance Committee reviewed the additional $362 and $15 of budget modifications that were added to the $2,039,000 of modifications amount approved by the board at the September board meeting. The additional modification amount consist, consisted of just over $100,000 being added on the original VR vocational rehab amount of $400,000. $100,000 would add to the original $300,000 in assessment activities, bringing a total of $400,000 in assessment activities. The last item making up the $362,000 of additional modifications was the multicultural coordinator position for $161,000. The commissioner confirmed that the work for the high ability learner coordinator and the multicultural coordinator would continue, but the job duties would have to be reassigned to other employees on the corresponding teams. I must add, the committee voted unanimously for this modification. We had a few discussion items and to go along with what Pat was talking about, the changes to some of the policies, moving the threshold from $25,000 to $50,000, our accountants advised us that would be the best course of action now due to the fact that that policy had not been looked at or reviewed since 2006. So that warranted changing. Thank you very much, fellows. Appreciate it. Also, we reviewed the board committees and agree 100% with what had come down from policy. And we are currently viewing a new process improvement in a new procedure in some of our grant processing oversight. And first this, this time at our meeting, we had a first quarter financial report and that was reviewed and discussed. The Financial Committee decided that the report would be made to the full board on a quarterly basis. Do I have any questions? Yeah.
The Policy Committee has been asking because of those adding committees, adding standing committees, do you have any, and finance, the Finance Committee is of course such a new committee, are you happy with the way the Finance Committee's description is in? is in policy?
Yeah, we think it's right on.
Okay.
Absolutely, for sure. Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
Just a point of information, you know, maybe the Commissioner or someone would like to comment on why we had to add $362,000 additional to the deficit funding allocation or request.
I might actually ask Shane and Bryce just to come up, because they could add even more clarification. I'll start and then confuse you, and then they will clarify the rest. It's actually, as you all know, you're, we see the news and information about state receipts and other things. And so, as a part of the regular process, normally, we're asked for roughly, say, a 5% modification. Part of the regular budget process is we have to lay out things of what would happen if you had to cut 5% of your general funds. It's not federal funds, it's general funds, and essentially within our operation aid is in addition to that, by the way. But this year, because of the circumstances, they asked for an 8%. There was also a change to how the Governor's Office and Budget Office asked for us to include salary increases within that, and some confusion, not just by our agency, but probably by others as well. And what we found out was that they asked for the increase in that, but they also wanted us to have a corresponding decrease overall. And so that ends up being the necessary additional modifications for this cycle. We felt it was important that we would do that. It had been asked a couple of times by the Governor's Budget Office, well, we'd have to include those, some additional cuts there. Would you prefer to identify those, or would you prefer that through the process it gets identified? And by the time we talked through it with the Committee, and I do thank you for your conversations on this yesterday, we thought it was important that we would lay out what we currently think is appropriate. By the way, we never want to have to take those types of cuts. These are only proposals at this point that will be thrown into the mix of the conversation at the Legislature going into this next, by any budget proposal. But if I confused you, now I have them here to back me up on clarifications. But I don't know if that covers it, guys, if you think.
Yeah, I think that's a very accurate description. There was a misunderstanding on the intent of the instructions as far as what we were to do with the proposed cost of living adjustment for our employees, and what would happen if there were not sufficient general funds to cover that. What would we propose cutting instead so that we could fund those cost of living adjustments? This was brought to our attention the day before the submission of the budget, after the Board had already approved the budget request. And because of that process, we were, felt that we were unable to submit a revised modification proposal at that point in time. The Governor's Budget Office did reach out and ask if we wanted to reconsider that, and we had a discussion about that and came forward with these three additions to submit for your review and possible approval. So that way, it would provide the Commissioner with the most flexibility if any of those modifications were taken.
You're still, it's still your committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Also, I'd like to point out that before any of these decisions were made in regards to this, if you will, motion or action item, the prospective department heads that would have to absorb some of the, if you will, extra responsibilities, they were contacted, and they were, they gave us assurance they could handle the extra responsibility with no problems. So, and also, I got to commend you all for regards to, we are literally working with vacant positions. Is that correct?
Those two positions currently are, do not have anyone in them, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Lilly.
John, you reported the Committee agreed, and I agree that we agreed. However, I want to make it clear that it concerns me about the high ability learners. And I go back to that it was in June of 2014, we had the ad hoc committee which Lynn Cronk headed up, if you recall. And I have the report here. I never throw anything away. So, but at any rate, I just want to read this summary, and it's brief. The goal is to always make sure that all Nebraska students, regardless of ability, will have the opportunity to fully develop their unique talents and skills through programs that are fully funded, and in particular, students identified as high ability learners. Currently, funding in part comes through the lottery funds. But I just want to reemphasize the fact that this is essential education. It needs to be provided, and services provided through staff that you said you've identified who will assume this responsibility. So, it's pleasing to me that you have figured out a way to continue the work and to meet the needs of all students, including the high ability learners.
John?
Go ahead, Lilly.
Thank you, John. We'll keep working on this. And I just want to thank John for his leadership on the Committee. And I think this is a very difficult decision, and unfortunately, we have difficult decisions that have to be made as part of the challenges that we may be facing as a state when we look at financial challenges in the state. And I think that one strength I've seen over the past couple of days in different discussions of Committees is that there's still a commitment. And I really sensed that in Policy Committee today, when we talked about how we look at policy around equity. And I certainly sensed it, you know, and felt it in our discussion at the Finance Committee, that we still believe it is important that we, that we serve all students, and that we are strategic in reaching out to our high ability learners, and to address the multicultural needs that we have with that position not being filled as well. But I think it's the pathway that seems to be the most reasonable pathway at this point in time as we work through those processes. So again, thanks for your leadership, John, in the Committee, and the direction that we're at.
Thank you, Rachel. Yes?
I am curious, what is, what is the Microsoft IT Academy that's being eliminated?
That is a proposed modification for the Governor's consideration. That was something that was inserted into the department's budget approximately two to three fiscal years ago, and it funds a program that allows students and teachers to receive Microsoft certification in certain products, Word, Excel, Access, other programming things. It was not something that the department requested as part of our budget request, but was inserted by the Appropriations Committee. And it's essentially a contract with Microsoft to provide those, the school districts of the state access to that service.
Okay. I guess, John, my comment about the proposed TOS reduction, if we're not required to take that 8%, Commissioner, are we automatically going to eliminate those anyway? This is just hypothetically.
No, in fact, not. Quite the opposite. I mean, we are required to submit the modifications. And so, we go through the kind of the litany of things that, you know, and have to make some tough recommendations to you. And when we go through that process, our hope is when they go to the legislative process, that there's also, you know, some, first of all, that we wouldn't have to take as many of those cuts, that there'd be other resources identified that could cover this. But it is a requirement on all agencies. I mean, everyone goes, if you have to cut something, what would that be, and what would you propose? And that's essentially what this process is. No guarantee that any of these are cut, but the reality is, just watching the state circumstances, we have to be as physically responsible, and that's part of this process.
Then that, this is my reaction to what you just said. I want to thank the Committee for looking at, it's like, it's like telling which children you want to give away, really. It's kind of, and I noticed that step up to quality, you're reducing by 300,000 to that. I just would ask in a positive way, the things that you're proposing elimination, can you make sure in our strategic plan that these topics are being included in our system? I know you said you're going to be assigning that to somebody that already exists, but those two jobs you're cutting were full-time coordinator positions. So, my request is make sure in the strategic plan, you're identifying where those, where those issues are going to be addressed. Because the LAP Poverty Plan Review, I mean, these are the kids that are our gap kids. And also, the multicultural Santee I know is one of our priority schools, and I'd be really sad if we are not addressing these issues in our strategic plan specifically.
Molly, there's no doubt that we all feel your sentiments in regards to what you just said. There's no doubt. Yeah, Pat?
Just a couple thoughts. One, we obviously won't know about these cuts until after the Legislature basically adjourns on May 30th or whatever next year. So, there's some time, and we don't know what's going to happen. Secondly, I know that the members are being sent a number of emails on the one position, and I think we will accept the Commissioner's assurance that he will see that somebody is responsible for doing that job, whether we have that title and that position or not. And the other thing that strikes me is, you know, I know that Rachel's brought up the fact that over the last 20 years, this has kind of been a bleeding process for the organization as far as the budget goes, and that, you know, and we really haven't increased staff or anything. And I did comment that, well, we've had a lot of technology changes over the last 20 years too, that ought to allow us to work smarter. But I think at some point, the organization needs to make a real effort to have a really good review of all the jobs and positions in the organization to see if, you know, maybe we're not doing everything we need to do, or we're doing things we don't need to do, and that would kind of fit into strategic, you know, helping us move on with our strategic plan and working more efficiently. I think there's some opportunities there just, because if we don't change things over 20 years, you know, something's not moving right. I mean, we've got to, we've got to address those changes and those opportunities, I think.
Any other questions, concerns? Go ahead.
You know, I just wondered about cutting our NASB membership instead of some of these other things. I know we've had a wonderful time at NASB, and they do a lot of wonderful stuff for it. But if it comes to cutting some employees versus cutting those dues for a year, maybe that's something we want to think about. And I guess, you know, given this presentation, all we see are the top 11, and it magically adds up to the number we've got to cut. But I guess what I'd like to see is maybe a menu of other options, you know, and then we can have a discussion. Well, NASB does this for us, and this coordinator does this, and kind of trade that off. We don't have, we're not really doing much of a trade-off here. This is all kind of cut and dried, I guess, is my thinking.
Can I speak to that, John? I think you bring up a good point, Glenn. But I think one of the things that the Committee talked about and what was presented is also looking at positions that were vacant right now. That, you know, that's, and I think to Pat's point, you know, how we move forward and do some different analysis around processes and priorities is important work for us to do. And how that weaves into the strategic planning process, how that weaves into the responsibilities of the Finance and Budget Committee, I think are important moving forward. But when you've got a short period of time that you have to come up with a plan, that part of the planning process, I think that staff did, was look at, you know, what's open, what's vacant, what are some things that maybe are most rational right now, maybe not the ideal. Because again, we're going to have a period of time of wait and see. But that period of time can give us an opportunity as a Board to also start to think strategically how we move down the road, and what are some priorities, and how do we look at maybe some different processes for some of the services that we deliver, and some of the needs that we see.
I would.
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
To kind of, kind of piggyback on that particular point, it's also not just looking at vacancies, but because this is dealing with state, it has to be general funds. So, then the window of opportunities is even more narrow. So, it's not about, I can't, I can't take federal funds and shift them over to do something. What we would try to do is go, what are the, what are the reasonable ways we can think about our programs for the future, to make sure that something is being carried out, how we handle ESA, how we think about, you know, I'll tell you, multicultural education, for instance, is not one I want to put on here at all, but it's a current vacancy, and oddly enough, a vacancy I can't currently fill, because we've actually committed that that would be a vacancy for a year. So, oddly enough, we're covering for that position right now. I have no desire to not have that position at the Department of Education, but there is a responsibility, that position's bigger than one person now. I would say the same is true with high ability learners, that we have to think differently about how we work. And I think that was a bit of our conversation on that level. And I think somewhat to Glenn's point, too, what I envision is that the Committee is doing that work and bringing new recommendations to the full Board, so that we can have those deeper dive conversations about what all those options are. And that's really the process piece that I think will be effective for us going forward.
Go ahead, Pat.
I think, and to my friend Glenn, you know, I think we don't really have a lot of time to do this. We need to do this now. And I think the Committee's done a good job, and our Finance folks have done a good job on it. I would say, you know, I asked the question, I think earlier, the year of the Commissioner about memberships, and I think he indicated that next year, he's going to look at those again seriously. So, and again, that's something that I would feel strongly that we ought to do. But we're kind of under the gun at this point. We need, I think we need to take the decision of the Finance Committee and move on and get this done so that we don't find ourselves in bad stead with the Governor or the Legislature when it comes to helping them get their job done.
One last question. Mark isn't, here is he. That number one, reduced VR appropriation, it also says that it would result in a reduction of 1,848,513 of federal funds. Are you concerned about the VR 500,000?
I would be concerned about that, and I think others will be. All right, so.
I wanted to bring up the VR, because that's huge.
Yeah. No, it is important.
Right at the time, we're incorporating them into our whole strategic plan.
It's somewhat the irony, so there is a general fund support for our VR services, and there is a leveraging component with that. Just like we try to leverage other aspects of our work and tie that together. That one's a really obvious one, right?
Just a point I'd like to make in regards to these professional memberships that we hold. Just a reminder, those are voted on by this Board, so it's our discretion which direction we want to move in regards to that. Also, thank you. Thank you so very much, Bryce, Shane. Greatly appreciate your efforts. Look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. That moves us to the end of our work session, which actually gives our Strategic Planning Committee a few minutes to meet. So, the Strategic Planning Committee will meet, I think, in Conference Room C for just probably a short 10 to 15 minutes. And we will adjourn for today. The regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning in this room. Thank you very much.